Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to open up the February 11th School Committee meeting. I appreciate everyone bearing with our time changes here. We have a lot of commitments from the School Committee members with different events that their students and children are involved in. And I appreciate everybody's patience with us moving this agenda along as we had to. Tonight, we're going to take several things out of order because of time constraints with members that have obligations as well. At this time, I'll ask everyone to rise and pledge allegiance.
It's right about there.
Oh, and it's back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction of members.
Kerry Godditt, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano-Milville.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Joe Spag, the Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pillagallaranius, Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Maya Gonyea, Stucco President.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Welcome all, and we'll move on to Consent Agenda A. Excuse me. First thing is warrants. I'll take the motion to approve the warrants. So, motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Kerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Approved minutes from January 9, 2024. So, motion made by Kerry.
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is to approve the budget workshop minutes from 1/22/25, 1/27/25, and 2/3/25. So, motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Kerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Let the record reflect that. Mr. Dutton has joined us. We're going to just take a couple of things out of order to start. Oh, I apologize. I shut it off. The update from the student representative. I had very apology to come up.
So, spring fling tickets for grades nine and 10, or eight through 10 now, I'm sorry, the other eight theaters now, are on sale at lunches, and that spring fling dance will be on March 7. As far as basketball goes, both girls and boys' basketball teams will be playing in the Clark Tournament that is starting this week. For spring sports, registration is now open for grades six through 12. Who want to register for any spring sport, whether that be softball, track, baseball. Our National Arts Society is planning and preparing their bowls for the annual Empty Bowl Dinner. Lots of kids were after school and in Ms. Robertson's art room during charger time firing up and painting their bowls. The class of 2025, our senior class, is planning and preparing for the annual Mr. B. Marshall that hit every year. Highly recommend coming to see that. Our student council is preparing for the annual state conference in Hyannis. This year, we have 10 students going to Hyannis on March 5 through 7 for that conference, and they are attending this trip to collaborate with students from across the state. And I am also running for a state position in Hyannis this year. I'm very honored to be able to be running for the position of MASC Secretary, and we've been working on campaign stuff and delegations. AP students have been taking and preparing for mock exams. AP Chemistry had a mock exam last week, and AP Literature and AP Language and Composition had their mock exams today. Course recommendations for next year will begin this week with student selection to follow. Students are starting to find out what courses are available to them next year, new course offerings, and other schedule intricacies that will follow next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Agenda item A, Promising Practices in Education. Jamie Maurice, Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good to see everyone here. We are excited tonight to recognize and honor one of our own. Each year, each of these school districts in Blackstone Valley takes some time to reflect upon what really sound instructional practice looks like and to reflect deeply on the impact that our teachers, staff members, have on our students. And we are challenged with selecting one individual each year that we want to lift and recognize across all the Blackstone Valley for their tireless efforts and dedication to our students and our school community. And I'm very pleased to share that this year, the recipient of the Blackstone Valley Promising Practices Award for Blackstone Millville Regional School District was Ms. Jamie Maurice. So, Jamie, if you want to come forward. Jamie, you want to just take a quick second, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but just share a little bit about your lesson that you presented to those, to the entire Blackstone Valley?
Sure. It was on error analysis. I'm sorry, I won't hand back to anyone. It was on error analysis. So, taking a word problem, the students worked in groups to analyze the problem, try and find the error within their group. Then they came up and presented their problem to the class. They were kind of like the leaders in learning. And then they allowed the other groups to try and find the error amongst themselves while they circulated the room and kind of led the discussions within each of the individual groups. And then they all took turns doing that within the lesson.
Thanks for sharing that. And Jamie shared that with all of the recipients at our breakfast, I think it was in October, November. So, again, congratulations, and I got a certificate and some flowers. If you quick picture. I'm going to go around this.
Okay. I'll stand right here. Sorry. I'm so sorry to have to. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, you guys. Thank you. No, you're fine. Thank you for those.
Thank you. I'm very humbled and grateful for the recognition and for the strong leadership I receive in the district, for all the colleagues I work with, and for all the children, even trust me.
Next, we're going to go down to vote and approve the use of the CHOICE program. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. We are lucky this evening to have a few very important folks with us. I'm going to ask that our school resource officers, Joe Nimzick and Scott Gould, join us up front. But I'm with Billy Beers, who is the founder and CEO of the CHOICES program. One of the things that we have been doing here is working diligently to find ways to help our students who are struggling the most. And so, we have another kind of pathway that we'd like to discuss this evening with the hopes of approving the use of the CHOICES program for our students who are most at risk. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Beers, to talk a little bit about the opportunities that await our kids.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to meet with everyone. I'd like to, if I could, I'll just give kind of a quick 10,000-foot overview of what it is that we do and why we do it. So, I was one of these kids that gets coined as behavioral or addicted in substance. I grew up in New York. My dad died when I was nine years old from alcoholism, and I was the one that found him. And from the age of nine until the age of 29, I fell in every hole that these kids are falling in. And I'm 23 years in recovery myself. I spent a lot of time in corporate America and then got remarried. And when I got remarried, I happened to marry a board-certified behavior analyst, and I got to watch how she worked with kids that were nonverbal and unable to communicate back and forth. And I watched her teach them how to communicate. And it kind of sunk in, and I said, well, I've got all this recovery behind me, and now that we're starting this agency for ABA, let's take a look at some of the kids that I used to be with. And so, we started doing a lot of research. We started going out. We met with all the recovery high schools throughout the state. I met with all the principals throughout the state that run the recovery highs. I met with a lot of different school districts. And I started to get the knowledge that we needed as far as what are these kids going through? What's happening with these kids in school? What's causing suspensions? And so, we started a program that was started out in the Beverly area called the PASS program. And the PASS program stands for Positive Alternative to Student Suspension. And primarily, what we're doing is, we are, for any kids that get suspended for nonviolent reasons. So, if a kid is suspended for substance, for tardiness, for no-shows, and they get a suspension, rather than that kid going home or coming to a Saturday Breakfast Club-type detention, we have the students come to us, and we represent 22 districts throughout Worcester County. And so, the student will come to us on day one of the suspension, and on day one, they're given five different assessments. And so, what we're doing is, we're looking at them from a clinical lens. We're trying to find out, based on the suspension, why that happened and what's going on behind the scenes. So, after those five assessments are done, the PASS program continues on, and it runs from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. every single day. And within that timeframe, we give two groups. One is a clinical-run group, one is social-emotional or psychoed within that 9 to 2 timeframe. In addition to that, they have two hours of academic time in a classroom with a teacher. And that time is spent using the work that the district provides us with that we know the kid has to keep up with. And so, we have a full-blown teacher and tutor. They'll sit with the kids. They'll make sure that the academics are complete. During that whole process, if it's a five-day suspension, they'll meet with a clinician at least once. They'll do at least three check-ins with a clinician for 15 minutes at a time. And the goal is to try to assess and analyze what took place, what happened, what are the triggers. But then, the important part for us is, when we do the transition back to the district, we give you a full-blown safety plan so that we don't need to suspend that child again. We don't need to add more trauma if it is clinical by nature. And so, what that means is, you simply call CHOICES. We come, we pick that kiddo back up, and we bring him back to CHOICES, and we settle them down, whether it's for a day, or three days, or five days, whatever it takes. Our goal is to be a support mechanism for the district. And my goal personally is to, last year alone, with PASS, we caught 76 kids under the age of 15 that had trauma starting at the age of five, had never seen a clinician, and were suspended multiple times. So, as this PASS program has been rolling out through the Worcester community, what we're finding is, it's a great catchnet for safety. We're catching these kids with trauma. We're allowing them to see what a clinician looks like, allowing them to see what CHOICES has to offer in a very dulled-down, calm environment. And so, our center is based in Worcester right now at 108 Grove Street, and we run at least 10 kids a day, depending upon the week. Some weeks are heavier than others. But at the end of the day, the important part for us is really the transition back because we don't want kids to stop what they start. We want them to finish their education. But we want to catch the trauma. We want to kind of capture what's going on and assist the district in helping that student progress into adulthood properly. In addition to just the PASS program, we also have an APG, which stands for an Alternative Peer Group. Alternative peer groups were formed back in Texas about 15 years ago, primarily as fun and recovery. So, for kids that are addicted, kids that are dealing with substance issues, kids that are heading these carts in school, they come to the afternoon program. In the afternoon program, we have another two groups. We run a clinical group. We also run another social-emotional or psychoed group for that population. But there's more activities in the afternoon. So, a lot of the kids that came in for PASS because they got suspended wanted to show up for the fun stuff afterwards. So, we actually have kids with us from 9:00 a.m. till 7:00 o'clock at night. Some of these kids don't want to go home. And so, in the APG, we do all sorts of fun stuff, like we go for hikes. We, you know, we go to beaches, we go to parks, we do a whole slew of things. We have a very robust summer program that all of our kids come back for, which is really cool. But the goal at CHOICES really is to provide access to care for the populations that we serve. And so, when dealing with communities and towns, Blackstone, Oxbridge, Millville, we want to be here. We want to be present for you. And so, we are, from a clinical perspective, we're rolling out clinicians, and we're rolling out some case management to this area and this region in particular to help offset some of the chaos that's going on. And in return, what we're doing is, we're trying to loop in and become inclusive with districts so that we can help with the alternative programming in any way, shape, or form that's going to assist the district, right? I also sit on a lot of opioid crisis boards throughout the state, and a lot of the districts are putting down line items on their opioid crisis funds that they don't need to. And overspending is going to happen. And so, we're trying to work inclusively with that as well, within the communities and municipalities. So, we really are geared in with the adolescents. We only take care of adolescents. So, our age range goes from 12 to 18. We do cover eighth grade with PASS, and we definitely cover eighth grade with diversion and APG. So, the last program that I can mention real quickly is, we did win the diversion grant for Worcester County two years ago. It's a five-year grant. So, we're going into our third year. We have 97 kids in our diversion program, and that's 93 more than anybody else in the country. So, we're working on a deflection model versus a diversion model, which allows us to keep the kids away from courts. So, when school districts have to file things like crawls on kids for not showing up to school, we have 90 days to turn that craw around so that that craw doesn't turn into a legal document. So that that child who can't get to school on time because of they're depressed or anxious or addicted, they no longer have to add trauma to their case. And we can work right through that with DCF and probation in the courts. So, we really are attempting to handle the population differently than ever before. We're not redoing anything that's been done before because it didn't work. And I think the key for CHOICES is, all of our staff at CHOICES are afflicted personally with the disease concept. So, we get it. We understand where these kids are. And once they come in, we love them until they can love themselves. And once they do, they don't want to leave. And so, we have a lot of good, fun, exciting stuff happening in Worcester, and there's no reason why we can't become inclusive in Blackstone and help out as much as possible here. So, I'm grateful for the opportunity to come in, and the resource officers are very important as well with what we're doing because these gentlemen are feet on the street. These are the gentlemen that can hear what's going on in the hallways. They can see what's going on. They can talk to these kids on a one-on-one level. And so, CHOICES is trying to really gear up and partner with school resource officers and different departments so that we don't have to leave any kid behind. You know, it's almost like the Marines for me. We don't leave anybody behind. So, if, you know, if the district does have challenging adolescents, challenging situations going on with adolescents today, we have a lot of resources that we'd like to offer and try to help as much as we possibly can. So, I think that could probably give you the 10,000-foot overview. I was there in Florida. I'm happy to answer any questions and kind of go from there. I don't know if you guys want to add anything or...
I don't have anything else.
Yes, the SROs have joined us because they actually brought the idea forward to Jill and I. And Jill, myself, and our two school resource officers actually went and visited the, Billy and his team, had an opportunity to take a tour. And then Jill Fowles and Mr. Ducharme, Keith Ducharme, also went up and had a chance to tour the facility, meet with the staff, get a really good sense of the programming, what kind of that day-to-day would look like for those students who would be removed from school for, again, those nonviolent offenses. We do have a kind of a cluster of students that are wrestling with some addiction issues at the high school that I think this could be a really helpful resource. One of the things the School Committee might recall at the evaluation cycle, the end of last year evaluation cycle, for me, we had some discussions around, you know, we put a lot of provisions in place around vaping and some of the, you know, substance issues. What is the next step we can take to help address some of these issues? And this was one that came forward as a really good opportunity. So, we wanted to bring it before the committee tonight for a discussion and see if you have any questions for Billy.
I just have one question. Once the process starts, you know, a suggestion, a student is suggested to the program, how does it work with parents getting the input if they're accepting of it? How's that process?
So, we have, there's two different takes that have to happen. One is from the district, and one is from the parent. And so, both take kind of a different route, but the goal is to get them to meet in the middle and have the parents come on the first day so that we can introduce ourselves, we can meet with the parents, they can see where the kid's going to be, and they can see what we're doing. We have a total open-door policy, so any parents or anybody that wants to come through for a tour is always welcome. So, yeah, that's... The other, one other point just to point out as well, choices is also a big part of the Oxbridge Opioid Crisis Team. And so, we're working diligently with Chief Monamoy and that whole team on a monthly basis. And these towns all fall into that. And so, one of the things that CHOICES did right away was, we went out and we kind of created this abatement process that the state's looking for and the federal government's looking for. So, there are multiple towns joining forces to combine their opioid money. And once that money is combined, Oxbridge could be the fiscal determinator, so they'll manage the money. It's no impact to taxpayers. And because of the route that Chief Monamoy was taking, we actually submitted a grant to double the opioid funds that are available. So, we're waiting right now to hear back on the RISE grant, which was a matching grant for $150,000, which would give this town and these communities a total of $300,000 to use towards opioid crisis. So, there's a financial uptick too that we're hoping that we can get from the state.
Is there like a long-term support for these kids? Like if they, you know, they're suspended that three days, whatever, and then they're not suspended again, but is there follow-up with those kids then?
Absolutely. So, from a clinical perspective, what we'll do is, we're not a 45-day assessment. We did try to get, we actually applied for the grant with BSAS. They told us we were a year ahead of them. So, we didn't get the 45-day assessment, but in all actuality, that's what we really need because we need to show the state that we can take in a child, and we can assess within 45 days and make the appropriate referral. Because what's happening now is, these kids are ending up in the collaboratives, and they're lost for years. And so, that has to stop, and we're working on that. But we have kids that come in for a 10-day suspension, go back to school. Three weeks later, there's another hiccup. They come back for another 10 days. So, we can always, from a clinical perspective, we can work independently based on case by case. But our goal is to be there for these adolescents all the way through adulthood. So, once they transition into adulthood, we have a transfer program with Lake Ave Recovery that we work. Jack Maroney is one of my mentors, and so, he handles a lot of the young adult population once they outgrow CHOICES. So, we do continue on with them, and we do have a young adult outpatient program for anyone up to the age of 28.
Any other questions?
So, all the adult, young adults, they're all together in this program?
So, we have... Yeah. So, young adults are, they're in the mornings, and it's outpatient only. So, a young adult means anybody from 19 to 28. And so, and the reason for having a young adult population is because a lot of our kids have young adults for parents. A lot of the kids and families that we work with are in the Worcester Housing Authority, and some of these parents have five or six kids. They're single parents. There's domestic violence. So, yeah, we're looking at everything.
So, the 12, you said it goes down to 12 years old and then up to 21?
Yeah. So, 12 to 18 is the primary core. So, PASS program is 12 to 18. The APG is also 12 to 18. And then, the outpatient for young adults is only in the mornings from 9 to 11. So, we keep it separate so that they're only in and out. But we have four different cohorts that we're working with right now, so we keep our eighth graders separate from our high schoolers. We make sure that everybody is doing their own thing within their cohort. We have 18,000 square feet on Grove Street, so we're fortunate with that. We can move kids around and make sure they're safe.
How's this look? So, what's the plan on the school side? You know, we say we have a group of at-risk, like...
Maybe this, I'll ask my question too. Say if someone is suspended today, are they referred to you by the district? Is that how that...
Yeah. It depends on what the infraction is. But let's say there's a situation where a student is under the influence of THC or something. Yes, instead of just suspending the kid for three days out of school, there is a removal from school. The kid is out of school for, you know, three days, but instead of sitting at home, you know, doing whatever, we would make a referral to the PASS program through the CHOICES program. Ms. Fowles, Ms. Ducharme would work with the family. Family would do the intake. We would do the intake on our end, and the student would end up going there for three days. There is transportation from the CHOICES program, and the cost right now, I believe, is $90 a day per student. And as the committee might be aware, we have a healthcare grant of about $100,000. That was the total amount. Jill is working on filing an amendment so that we can use that grant to pay for this, but we can't file the partner agreement until the committee approves it. So, once that's done tonight, we would look for authorization through the healthcare grant to pay for the students to attend. So, that student would go for the three-days return. There's actually a second meeting where members of, if I remember this correctly, Billy, members of your clinical team meet with our clinical team, and that student transitions back. If the student has another issue with substances, we can send the student back. And then, you actually have at CHOICES a tiered system where you would increase your support. There's also an applied behavior analysis, like an ABA side to your work as well, where you actually can go into the home and do some clinical work with the families if necessary. Is that right?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's the... Yeah. So, the in-home behavior services we offer, we do quite a few homes in Worcester County. We have 53 clinicians that are on the in-home behavior side. And so, what that looks like is, if a student is struggling with school or behavioral issues and they need help in home, we can send in a team, and that team will go into the home, and it's a short period. It's three months, max. And it's not for the adolescents specifically, it's for the family. It's to help the family organize the adolescent better. It's to get that adolescent up and moving. So, if we have some, for instance, a kid can't get up in the morning to get to school, we can send BCBA's out into the home in the morning so that we can shake the kid up, wake them up, and get them on a plan and start the process. So, the in-home behavior piece is always a good option. We also have outpatient services for adolescents and young adults. We do a lot of group therapies. We do some parenting resources at the center monthly, but, and we're adding programs kind of weekly at this stage. The uptick in kids is quite a bit. A lot of kids out here.
So, schools are, what's the level that we're going to? What's the, like, the catalyst that's going to put this into the SOZ? First-time offender, or, you know, when does that, when does this kick in, this program?
I was going to say, we have students who, we have other supports that are in place for our students in school, but we are seeing students who are multiple offenders. You know, it depends on what it is too. You know what I mean? We have...
So, what is, do we have an idea what the structure would be to put a student into the, because it sounds like, it sounds like a great program. It does...
So, they're currently working with Jill and Keith. There's currently 10 to 12 students that would, this would probably be a very good fit for right now, that we've had multiple offenses of, you know, vaping and THC or alcohol, those kinds of things, that we want to refer specifically for some of the addiction work.
We're also really well-influenced with UMass Chan Medical School. And so, we have our own, believe it or not, pediatrician mat providers for kids that are addicted. And we're working diligently with UMass right now. They've approved a building for us to go in with UMass on for a true-blue PHP environment for adolescents and substance abuse. So, they're really looking at this hard, and a lot of what we're seeing in our center, we're trying to have the medical field see what we're doing as well because even the doctors are kind of lost with some of this stuff. They don't understand, you know, what it means for a kid to be vaping, you know, THC, that's not real THC. It's all these dab pens that you see floating around the school, those are, it's fake. It's Delta 8. It's not, it's not THC. And there's most likely fentanyl or morphine in these carts. We collected 174 carts over the past year and a half, and we're having UMass do all the toxicology. And then, we're presenting at the AMA Board and Waltham this summer. So, we're really keyed in on what is going on with the kids, what is it that they're ingesting, and why, and how they're getting it as well, is a, you know, that's a job all of its...
Any other questions? And Mr. Superintendent, what is the, we, the motion would be to adopt or to allow the...
Yes.
District to enter into an agreement with CHOICES?
Yes. Yep. We would do an MOU with them.
If anybody's interested in making a motion to...
I'll make a motion. I'll make...
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion to vote to approve the use of the Choice program. Second.
Motion made by Tara S., seconded by Tara L. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you very much for what you do. Thank you, gentlemen. Joe, thanks, Scott.
Thank you, everyone. Superior Day.
Your e.
Just gonna try to take care of a couple.
Yeah, you wanna start taking off some of your.
Yeah, it's just the quiet stuff. Yeah, the class to twenty-twenty-five scholarship, scholarship.
Yes, this is the annual scholarship that the school committee awards to, I'm looking for a copy of it. Awards to one of our graduating seniors. I do have a copy of it. Here we go. And the amount of five hundred dollars. It's the same scholarship that they give each year. So we just need to approve that so we can give it to the?
Recipient?
Yes, to the guidance office and they'll start the recipient.
Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five scholarship. Motion by Tara, seconded by Carrier, Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, it's unanimous. We'll touch on the BMR Spain field trip, second chaperone course. Matt, I think you asked for the, what that cost would be? And that cost is fifty, fifty-three hundred and forty-two dollars?
Yes.
Are we, so I, I understand your concern was the, for the amount of children, there was only one chaperone.
The safety of the students going and not having another chaperone.
They have one for the four of them.
Typically, yeah.
This would be a second one for the four of them. And that would be the cost for the, for the district to send the second chaperone. If they can.
No, the end of that.
Another teacher?
Yeah, yeah. That staff member. May not be a teacher.
And we'll partner up with another district on this?
Yes, yeah, been assigned to them yet, but.
Yeah, you know, oh, you don't know?
No, not yet.
Which the tour company puts us with another school that's also low in numbers.
And those, that other school in our school will communicate, I'm sure, before you?
Yes.
Would you mind kicking this off to the next agenda to see what those numbers are? When's the trip?
April. April vacation too. Yeah, just finding somebody that will, you know, I'm sure somebody would love to go to Europe for a week, but. We have four from BMR.
It'll deal with another district that has the lower numbers, the one to chaperone.
That's right. One from BMR and then one from the other school district.
My concern is that we weren't going to know who that was until possibly right before we are going. And we have one, one chaperone for our four students. Should anything happen to that chaperone, our students are now in, you know, with people they don't know, rather than have someone that they're familiar with. And it's just better off to have two adults with, you know, students in general. I mean, my idea is.
We haven't done an international trip since before COVID. I think Canada was the last one we went. Montreal or something. It was a while ago. Usually the numbers are larger too. This is a, an unusually expensive trip because it's Spain and France.
Well, we have a tremendous amount of volunteers in the audience.
Many of them want to go to Europe for a week.
This would be funded how?
That's a good question though. How will the chaperone choice be chosen if it is approved for a second chaperone?
We'd work in a nice.
Democratically. Either pull it out of a hat or rock eight or six. And, and then I'll go.
We'd have to find it through one of our budget lines. Yeah.
I'm waiting to hear it.
I'll make a motion to approve the BMR HS Spain field trip, second chaperone cost of five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars.
Motion made by Matt. We have a second, a second by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in, no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, two, three, four. Any opposed?
Aye, nay?
You and, okay, that is four to two. All right, let the contest begin. Is Jill in charge of the contest?
Yes.
I recommend that she probably shouldn't be because she's already picked the winner over there. Okay, so I'm moving to action items for the purpose of time, so. We have two quick field trip requests. One for the Rhode Island second grades, to Rhode Island second grade for the Stadium Theater, I guess we'll, and one for, to Connecticut fourth grade for Mystic Aquarian. Motion made by Tara on the field trips.
I just have a question.
Sure thing.
The show for Stadium Theater, I'm just curious.
Well, you could have sucked in, you could have had it.
This is please.
Oh, it's time to loan in the morning.
Thank you.
Are you interested in chaperoning that one or? Okay, a motion and a second on the field trips. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're gonna jump back up to public forum. Anyone wishing to address the school committee this evening? You have three minutes at the podium. And before we get started, I will ask how many people intend on addressing the school committee? By a show of hands. One, two, three, four. Was it just four? One? Do it again? Okay, maybe one, two, three, four. There was no hands over there, right? Okay, I'm sorry. Ma'am. Please state your name and your, and feel free to speak.
Thank you. I'm Becca Schnorbus. I'm here to talk about the sex ed curriculum that was approved last December. First of all, I'd like to thank the school committee and Dr. DeFalco for reading the email I sent about how the sex ed program is grooming children for abuse rather than protecting them from it. It was a long email. I appreciate you guys reading it. Tonight, I'll be addressing other concerns. I believe Dr. DeFalco and the school staff understood that revising the curriculum to meet the new standards would cause conflict and they did their best to handle things carefully. I want to acknowledge this effort and applaud them for making it an opt-in rather than a opt-out program. However, I'm disappointed that when this came before the school committee for approval, the committee members who wanted more time to read through and discuss what was put forth were dismissed and outvoted. Now you have all had more time to review the curriculum and hear from citizens. I urge the committee to make a better choice. If no change is made, know that the community is watching. Your vote tonight will impact upcoming elections for years to come. I personally have reviewed the materials being used for second to seventh grade and this program is revolting. Under lesson plans for K through two and a lesson titled Respect, young children are taught that they can choose their gender. In the lesson, Making Smart Choices, sixth and seventh grade students are given sexual scenarios to act out in groups and show how they would make good decisions during a sexual encounter. There is no reason or excuse to expose minor children to this type of overtly sexual material. On top of the content itself, the program discriminates against families of faith. The motto of our district is where everyone is welcome and belongs. Yet, much of the material in these lessons is offensive and intolerant to anyone who holds to a conservative Christian, Muslim, or Jewish worldview. This curriculum teaches the very opposite of what many faith-driven families believe. Some argue that it's not the school's job to teach religion, and that is true. But it is also not the school's job to teach children ideas that undermine the values they are being taught at home. Parents are told that they can opt their child out of these lessons. I have gone a step further. A couple of years ago, I removed my children from this school district entirely. Many parents in our community don't have that option. For them, opt-out is not sufficient. Kids talk. The controversial ideas taught in the lessons will show up in other subject areas. These teachings permeate school culture. It creates expectations and sets standards that not all students approve of. But opt-out is not enough. As of now, if a child of faith refused to conform to this ideology and held to the religious beliefs taught at home, they would face significant consequences in your schools. This has already happened in other districts and it's resulted in lawsuits. I encourage you guys to do the right thing. Protect students and protect our town by rejecting this curriculum. Thank you.
Aye.
I am here today to ask the school committee to rescind the new sex ed curriculum. Exposing children to sexual content at a young age can have long-lasting effects on their mental and emotional development. It is essential to address the concern over who is promoting sexual agendas to children under the age of eighteen. It is unacceptable for individuals, organizations to introduce young students to inappropriate and explicit sexual content. This raises questions about the motives and intentions of those who advocate for such education. In the new sex curriculum approved by this committee, Planned Parenthood is presented as a resource to fifth graders. This is alarming. Planned Parenthood or any other organization with a specific agenda should never be trusted with shaping the sexual education of young individuals. Parents should be the primary source of information and guidance for children when it comes to understanding their bodies and sexuality, followed by doctors and therapists of the parents choosing. Pointing their, pointing children towards activist organizations that promote sexual activity, gender confusion, and abortions to elementary schoolers undermines a parent's ability to protect and guide their child. It jeopardizes the child's safety and is incredibly irresponsible. Teaching fifth graders to access Planned Parenthood and providing them a link where they can learn how to get free birth control and watch videos called "How Can I Tell If My Partner Has An Orgasm?" or "How Do I Stop Ejaculating Too Fast?" is only one of the many problems in this curriculum. While the minority may advocate for this type of sexual education in schools that does not reflect the beliefs of the majority in our community, just because a few individuals may support these initiatives does not mean that the broader community agrees with or endorses such practices. Thankfully, even though DESI recommends these standards, we are not legally required to adopt them. We as a community must fully understand and consider the implications and consequences of normalizing sexual content in educational settings. You as a school committee have a duty to act as our representatives and you must intervene to protect our children. In conclusion, we must prioritize the well-being and proper development of children by advocating for responsible and appropriate sexual education practices. The newly approved curriculum is not responsible or appropriate. Parents, doctors, and therapists should be the primary resource of information for young individuals, not the school organizations. With progressive political agendas, should not have a role in shaping the sexual education of children. It is crucial to protect the innocence and mental health of young minds by promoting ethical and age-appropriate education on sexuality. Let us ensure that our educational systems uphold the values and standards that safeguard the well-being of our children. Vote today to rescind the new curriculum.
Good evening. Gina Elias. I apologize upfront for not making eye contact. I, I'm trying to be respectful at times, so I wrote a lot of this down. All right, so let me just start by going back to December twelfth in the school committee meeting to follow in a statements, questions, answers directly from that meeting. These are not going to be my words. These are directly from the decision-makers that were at the meeting and the educators tasked with coming up with the curriculum and ultimately passing the curriculum. DESI approved, DESI approved, DESI approved. Mandatory, mandatory, mandatory. DESI framework, it wasn't our decision. We end the curriculum with having the kids explore trusted websites as it pertains to the fifth grade level for our nine and ten-year-olds. We were mandated to put this into the curriculum and we will roll it into other lessons that we have. Question posed by a committee member. At the younger levels, we are adding more gender stereotypes into the curriculum. Is that new? Yes. Question, was it necessary? Interrupted by a second committee member. I mean, who came up with this idea? Interrupted by a third committee member. It was mandated to teach. Well, yeah, just framework, we were just following. This wasn't our decision. Question, just want to be clear, but it is a topic that you guys are mandated to put into these lessons, correct? Yes, yes, yes. Not one yes, three yeses. Are there any repercussions to not following the DESI framework? I don't know what, how, what would come of that. We would have to report it. During that discussion, a member is interrupted with, this is on an action item and that needs a vote tonight. And then finally, we need something for them to teach before the end of the quarter. So let's put that aside now. Let's explore the trusted websites. And I hope tonight we can answer who came up with these trusted websites. That, that's, that I would love to know. That being said, seeing their websites would imply they're multiple websites with different views or alternatives to what's being taught within this curriculum. But that's not what this is. And mind you, this is what the fifth grade, our nine and ten-year-olds are getting. Planned Parenthood, Amaze.org, they are, their managing partner is Advocates for Youth. Advocates for Youth is partnered with Planned Parenthood. That's one ideology. That's one view sold as multiple trusted websites. So let's be clear. These three websites all connected to one another, they share the same ideology and similar agendas when it comes to social issues. This was not clearly articulated at the December meeting. And if this was known, it wasn't, and it was intentionally not articulated, then it was presented in bad faith. When it comes to not following DESI framework or recommend, recommended guidelines of reporting it and not knowing what could happen as a result was concerning. The reason it's so concerning is because nothing would happen. You don't have to follow DESI. You don't, right? We know this, right? Yet, the answer provided in that December meeting promoted fear, unknowns, the possibility something might happen. And to be quite hon, honest, the answer, if it was intentionally given in that manner, when you knew you would not be, any issue would become of it, that's misleading and in bad faith. Forty-eight hours to review two hundred and seventy-six plus pages of curriculum. Research trusted websites, research other websites that are linked to the trusted websites, which I've looked and there are plenty. We talk about it all the time. Kids go on TikTok. They should be on this. They should be on this. There aren't the stuff that they should be looking at. Yet, the websites we direct them to have plenty of links to go down the rabbit hole. Same thing with the maze. Click on one video, there's seventy other propaganda-type videos at the hands of these children. And review these videos linked to the, to the, to those videos. Somehow take a well-informed vote. So all that should have been done at forty-eight hours. But in the statement at December's meeting, actions needed, vote must take place. Again, this statement, although accurate, because it is an action item, it was made to, if it was made to intentionally push a vote forward, that is in bad faith. The statement, we need something for them to teach before the end of the quarter. If this statement was made to show urgency that somehow the educators wouldn't have something to teach, then again, if intentional and stated to mislead others into a vote, that is in bad faith. The question posed in the December meeting mandated into, in the meetings that was this mandated to be put into the lessons? Yes, yes, yes. Again, this answer, if intentionally given, would be in bad faith. So what happened? Did just so many people get wrong, get this wrong or were they misinformed? I don't know. Or is it someone or a group of folks driving the agenda to push this ideology and their views on social issues onto our children? So let's just switch gears quickly. Careers in the health field, research and salaries and credentials to enter the nursing and physical therapy field and et cetera. Environmental health and. Environmental health and hazards and how that affects your health. Fitness, how fitness and physical activity benefits your body, learning the muscle groups, exercises that help those muscle groups, safety while out in the sun or in the weight room, creating a personal fitness plan. What does all those things have in common, those topics? It's the alternative learning. If you opt out, that's what you will learn about, right? None of it has active teaching. None of it is divisive. And it could have been taught to meet the end of quarter dilemma that we heard about, which was they wouldn't have nothing to teach, because we know they meet the DESI framework and guidelines. Every single thing I just said meets that. So in which the statement, we need something for them to teach was referring to, which in turn would have allowed more time to review all this. You guys could have had more than the forty-eight hours, which some committee asked for. And finally, most importantly, there'd be no opt-in or opt-out for this type of curriculum. Which brings me to my final point, why didn't we make the alternative curriculum the actual curriculum? And send out a letter to the parents, letting them opt in and out of learning about healthcare and how to take care of your bodies and take care of your muscles and eat healthy and create fitness plans? Let's be honest, if we did that, a hundred percent of the parents would say, why am I getting this opt-out letter? Plus, I would venture to say a hundred percent of the parents would opt in. Furthermore, the current curriculum, I personally believe that was passed, would be a great elective class for kids and a compromise without being divisive. My best guess is the opt-out of the current curriculum that has passed is probably low and some will proclaim and convince others they made the right vote, that this is somehow a victory or buy-in by the parents of this community or communities. But we know that just like the committee members couldn't digest this in forty-eight hours and somehow, parents at home were going to do all that work and make an informed decision really skews those numbers. If they knew and watched the videos I've watched and did the research I've done, those numbers would be different. Again, back to the theme of intentional. If this was a thought in anyone's mind that parents would just sign off and not take the time to research all of this, well, mission accomplished and take your victory lap. I guess preying on the fact that parents are busy and they trust our schools to do the right things is a means to an end to pass a curriculum based on an ideology and social views some may support. To close, there was alternative learning available before the end of the quarter. There would be no repercussions for not following DESI guidelines. This was not mandatory. There was no rush to act at the December meeting. We could have allowed more than forty-eight hours for committee members to review that something that is so divisive and comprehensive as this. We could have pushed it to January to allow for a proper, well-thought-out vote. We could have been truthful and upfront, not give political answers, but rather have real talk in place of some being deceptive and misleading others to achieve the outcome they desire. Again, who is driving the agenda? Based on everything I have spoken about, I feel this process was a fraud to this community. There is a lack of respect for parents and an ideology amongst some to replace the parent altogether and push their views onto our children. To make statements and get so many things wrong only means you've got them all right. You have achieved what you've set out to do. There is no coincidence that some of the most brilliant folks in our community and those we depend on the most to steer us in the right direction just simply misspoke repeatedly. But your actions coming up as you reconsider this curriculum and this meeting will tell the real story. I can only hope that everything I said will be proven as fiction and that you all just needed more time to really investigate the curriculum and are ready to move forward with a well-informed vote on the matter and look for ways to unite a community rather than divide one. And I want to go off script really quick and say, look, there are people with two different mindsets, but there's always common ground and we can always find it. Doesn't have to be extreme here, it doesn't have to be extreme here, but the underlying facts are, at the end of the day, we are in no place to judge anyone. It doesn't matter what you proclaim you are gender-wise, it doesn't matter what your home life is, none of it matters. We should be growing our kids up to respect everyone and that's the message we should be sharing in schools every single day regardless of the curriculum. We do not have to divide kids and separate kids in school and pass curriculums that are divisive all around this country. We are a smaller town, we can do things, we can work together to really find the common ground. And I hope and I really pray that we all put feelings aside and what's best for this community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee under public forum? Okay, thank you all for speaking. Next on the agenda is the vote to reconsider approval of the, excuse me, Health and Sex Education Standards and Materials. So this was a request by a member of the school committee to be put on the agenda. The vote, I will take a vote to see if the committee is interested in reconsidering the vote that was taken on December 12th. If that vote passes, then we would discuss how that, then it would go to another vote on what, what we would do with that curriculum, whether make amendments, leave it alone, or what have you. So with that, I will take a motion to reconsider the Health and Sex Education Standards and Materials. Seconded by Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? Aye, unanimous. Now we're going to move to the curriculum that was voted on on December 12th. And what is the pleasure of, or discussion on that curriculum by committee members?
So, Mr. Chair, if I could. Doing more research than what I, you know, the cursory searches and the cursory, you know, research that I did prior to the December 12th meeting, a lot of stuff has come to light, much like the folks in the audience have mentioned is, there's rabbit holes that we go down. The materials that are provided to the students, especially at the fifth grade level where they're nine, 10 years old, just getting into, you know, possibly using social media and whatnot. When these trusted websites come up and you're in YouTube and all that, I agree with what some of the sentiments we heard tonight were, the suggested videos after that. And I sussed this out by utilizing my own child, who's a fifth grader, using his phone and searching this stuff. What comes up after is jarring. It's really concerning. There was, and I mean, no way to be crass, but one of the next videos, and maybe it's something I need to talk to my son about, but, and we do have these conversations often, but it was to use, you know, instructions on using certain sexual devices. Okay, that's strange. So I tried this out on a different, a different family member's phone. This person was not happy that I was doing it, but I had to use the scientific method. And again, not the same video, but a similar video came up as, so, very concerning that we have fifth graders, ten, nine, 10, 11-year-olds who have, who are being, not just have access to it, they always have access to this, but based on this framework and what they're being told to do, they're going to actively go and do this. They could go actively go and do this with or without parental permission. It's up to the parents, obviously, to be teaching their kids and having these conversations, that's the first step. Couple of the other things as I was uncovering this is the K through two curriculum. I printed a lot of this out, so kindergarten through two, some of the curriculum is to correctly identify at least three body parts of the female, namely, the nipples, vulva, and anus. There's also cartoon-like images that can be shown. This doesn't mean that the teachers are going to use this, this is actual, this is just part of the curriculum that's offered through Advocates for Youth. It instructs this teacher to make post-its, each one labeled with vulva, nipples, anus, shoulder, foot, and belly button, and place them near the locations on the cartoon image. For parents that maybe have opted their child in, I understand we have the numbers of the opt-in and opt-out, were they privy to this? Did they have this, did they go through this information? I don't know, it's their call. But it's just, it really is, for the committee to understand, if you haven't looked through this, if you haven't gone down these rabbit holes, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot for kids and it is political ideology that drives this. I don't believe as one committee member that, it's just not necessary at this point for this school, for these children to have this. We can get this information to the kids as parents if that's what the parent wants to give to the child as far as information. The government does not have, we're the government, the school is the government, we do not have to do this for the parents. Alright, yes, they have the opt-out and the opt-in and all that, but, I mean, if you take a look at some of this stuff, it really is graphic and divisive. So, you know, it's, it's telling children that as young as first grade, you know, they're separating them based on what their, what the ideology might be and what do you believe? And it's really, it's just kind of creepy. It's creepy what they're doing. I have no problem with what people want to do in their home and what people want to, you know, teach their own children and that's fine. But as a school district, as a government structure, as a public school system, I just don't think it's necessary for us to be approving this. So I don't know if I have, if I have this right, so allow me to misspeak, but do we have the ability to separate this out by grade level and vote on this separately if it's, if the motion is made? We set the curriculum, so.
At this point, how intricate do we get into the curriculum? Like strand by strand?
So just to, what Matt was just referencing, so we're not doing that material at kindergarten or first grade, and I want to be really clear for anybody watching this, because I think words are incredibly important. Yeah, and I think words are incredibly important in this conversation. We're using terms like rabbit hole and we're talking about videos that are connected to the videos that are in our curriculum. So I think those are really, really important things to discuss and I think we should talk about those things, but I also want to be very clear to our families that are listening that the rabbit hole conversation and the videos connected to our curriculum, that's not what we were putting forward as curriculum. You're talking about, you watch a, you know, you go to a website or you click on a link and then it's the thing that comes up next, right? So I think that's a really valid point and I think that's something to be explored, but I want to be clear that when our educators put these things together, that was not at all the intent, was to show that, you know, three video clicks later, what that exploration was going to do. It was the primary material as the source.
I don't disagree with that.
Unfortunately, we all know, you know, kids, when they get onto these things, it's just, next video up and next video up.
Yep, no, I understand what you're saying.
As unintentional as it would be, it still is going to, could potentially happen. The only other thing I'll add to this is the, and the overall is the victimhood that it promotes. And I just don't know if this curriculum, as it's, as I've read and I honestly, in the time that since the last meeting till now or, you know, the 12th and that, whenever it was that I've been looking at this, I feel like I haven't even scratched the surface on what a lot of this is getting to, but I just get this overall feeling of, no matter what, it just promotes a feeling of victimhood and that's just like this, like, it's like downtrodden, like, you know, you'll never, you know, you'll never be good enough and it's like, you know, it's a lot of victimhood. I just keep coming back to that word, victimhood, so. That's all I had to say.
Typically, are you with?
Were just a, are you a parent or a member of the public? I apologize.
I'm sorry. President of the elementary PCO to parents.
President, okay, yeah.
And a parent.
Two minutes. You got two minutes if you want to join, tell her, come to the table.
Thank you. I appreciate the time and I appreciate everyone, we're all here because of our children and we care a lot about them. My name is Renee Christie. I know that these are hot-button discussions and I think it's coming from a very privileged point of view that a nine, 10, or 11-year-old hasn't already been exposed to these sorts of experiences or that a kindergarten, first or second grader may not know inappropriate touch versus appropriate touch. So I think in terms, very respectfully, Matt, in terms of victimhood, these are very fragile, vulnerable humans that may not have the guidance at home, that is only getting the information from the schools. Looking at different genders or gender fluidity and different non-traditional relationships, those individuals are at a very high risk for self-harm as well as a very high risk of being injured by their peers. And I just ask everyone here that's a parent, would you be willing to take that risk and say one in 10 is of the population that is getting attacked? And would you be willing to allow your child to be the victim and think, I can't even talk to my teachers that I'm questioning my gender or my two parents that are the same sex, that I can't even have a conversation with my, my own teachers and I'm getting bullied or I'm getting harassed by students that don't understand, that are honestly getting rhetoric from people that I would hope that my students can, my personal kids can be strong enough to be kind to the individuals that are here, because I don't think that they're hearing kindness, I don't think that they're being open and I think it's really unfortunate. And I think this is really important, that you really think a lot about it and we're a small community, we're a pretty isolated community and it's concerning. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I just want to clarify one.
No, I got it from you, thanks. At no time would this, whatever decision would prevent a student from talking to the teacher or the counselor or of any issue, whether we have this curriculum or not.
They may not even know that they're able to have that discussion. They may not even recognize.
I wanted to make it clear, the school district would not ever, and I have faith in the teachers in the school district, that if there was an issue and they know their students well, they would address them and the staff, so.
Sure.
I just want to make that clear. Well, make it real quick. Yeah, yeah, you can do it right from, yeah, you're fine.
I know that your rule is to allow the speaking, but again, I think this goes back, like, there's these catchwords about being privileged, right? And again, we're taking and we're assuming that the vast majority of parents in Blackstone and Millville don't give two shits about their kids. That's the minority. The majority of the folks have a real in-depth understanding of what their children need. That's the majority. I'm not, I'm speaking, okay? So this goes, I'm not going to sit here and get gaslit by you, okay? And the timing that you step forward and be able to sit here to sway the vote of these people is typical tactics, okay? At the end of the day, we're talking about nine and 10-year-old kids who we are talking about gender identity, gender stereotypes. We're talking about searching these videos and going to Planned Parenthood and everything else in general that these kids don't even know what it means. Now, I'll finish with this. To say my kid knows what things mean at 10 years old or 9 years old, they may have heard the word, right? But as a parent, if my kid came home and said to me, "Hey, Johnny's got two daddies." That's weird. I'd say, "Mind your business, respect that family, and knock it off." And I think the vast majority of the parents in this town would do the same. We don't need to be lectured and told we're privileged in this town or anywhere and told, "We're going to know what's better for your kid in the classroom." Okay? At some point, you can't just broad-brush every parent as they're not engaged. That's irresponsible. I take offense to it. A lot of people take offense to that. Thank you.
That's it? So we're going to get back to the committee?
That is separated, no, two seconds, two seconds. Why can't we just compromise that this isn't taught until middle school or high school? This has no place in elementary. That is a compromise, in my eyes. I think that's fair, fair to everyone involved. You get it? Just later on down the road. That's all I have to say.
All right, so that's the end of public engagement on this. Matt, you've spoken. Any other committee member wish to add to this? Chuck.
How does that curriculum help our students in their get better grades and increase our test scores? And it's so divisive. I think we should go to the alternative method for now and sort things out. We need more time to review this.
I don't think that we should move forward. I think we should reject that curriculum.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank, yes.
Are we able to, I know we've, this is our reconsidering of it, but are we able to table this and get a list of which strands are actually taught within the frameworks? And then look through those piece by piece? Is that?
We can do whatever the committee.
I have, can we see the links?
In those curriculums too, that's.
When I looked through it, but yeah, that's, yeah.
Joe, I think it's flawed and where it came from. I think we need to just drop in, start fresh with coming up with something new. I don't know why. No, it's phys ed. Let's stick to the basics and why we especially in the elementary schools, we don't need to teach these, expose these kids. We're not privileged.
Okay, well, I was asked to put a motion to reconsider on the agenda. What is the alternative? What's the motion for the alternative?
I'll make a motion for the alternative. Health and, health education as the main health education? I don't know how to word it. So basically, I want to make a motion to, you know, utilize the alternative curriculum as the, as a replacement for the Advocates for Youth sex ed curriculum.
All right, there's a motion in second. Mr. Superintendent, how, do you understand that motion? How that would affect?
What I, what I understand is that Matt has made a motion to eliminate the current health curriculum and replace it with the alternative lessons. Is that right? Do I have that correct? So all of the work around, just so I have a clear, like, gender identity, sexual orientation, different types of families, you know, foster care, two moms, grandparents raising, all that gets put out and is replaced with whatever the alternative is for that grade level. Do I have that straight? This is important. I want to make sure if that happens, we're doing.
Can we suss this out a little bit and maybe add in that the, you know, flip?
Can I ask a question? Flip it. You know what would be really helpful and maybe, and I actually think this whole conversation is very helpful for a lot of different reasons and I would like to take a moment. As the individual who is in charge of the education of all 1,500 kids in this school system, nobody wants to put anyone in harm's way. I want to say that upfront. And nobody, nobody wants to lead through any process, whether it's the educators in the classroom who are putting these materials together or presenting the materials in front of the committee, to have it thought or assumed or be treated like their integrity was being called into question and that the honesty behind the process they were using and the why behind the decision-making was devious or mischievous in any way. That's hurtful to our educators. I assume some of that because of the seat I sit in. So superintendents get that hit constantly, whether it's a snow day call or whether it's something with curriculum decision, right? So fair enough. But I do not want the educators in the classroom to be viewed that way at all, because they did work very hard to try to put something together that made a lot of sense with standards that some of them were kind of wrestling with and trying to figure out. That's why we didn't teach some of these things in kindergarten or first grade. I think it needs to be said because I think people are forgetting those things. And that's why we pushed them to second grade, fifth grade, eighth grade. And we tried our best to move those more intense standards to the highest grade span allowable within the Department of Education framework. So I want to be really clear about that. What would be really helpful for me, and Matt, you and I have had this conversation before, if there are key pieces of the, of the standards that are of most concern to people, and it sounds like there might be, getting some of that feedback and looking to see what's possible there, because I don't agree that, that we should be eliminating all of this and I will tell you why. Because you have children in a second grade classroom that are being raised by their grandparents, that are in foster care, that do have two mothers, that have a mom and a stepdad, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't think that those kids should feel marginalized in any way, shape, or form because they do not have a mom and a dad, a traditional family at home. So I am going to fight for those kids because I think they matter. But I also think that everyone in this room thinks they matter too. And I agree with you about that meeting in the middle and kind of figuring out how to do this in a way that makes sense. And I will say to you 100%, that is what the educators tried to do in this process. They truly did. And I do not want them victimized in this. So if we can try to find a way to address what the main concerns are without marginalizing our kids and families, the same kids and families that we love and we fight for daily. The irony here is you're fighting for them and so are we. We're all fighting the same fight, but we're looking at it from different perspectives. I read all the stuff that people post and it's a fuss. And it causes problems and it's divisive and it's not necessary. If we're going to work together, let's work together. Let's really do it. So getting some feedback on what those issues are would be, would be really helpful so that we can put together a program that makes sense for all in our community, all. Because that second grader who's singing in that classroom deserves to be respected too. So that would be helpful to hear, though.
No, I'm going to just, no, I'm going to stop right there. What's, what's, what do you want? We've heard, we, we, we hear everybody. One question, quick.
Can you put curriculum with the parents? Do a committee, put a table again. Do a committee and include parents. To work on a, on a curriculum that we're okay with, that you're okay with, that gets our point across, that gets your point across. I was a second grader with two moms. I get it. I do.
We get your question.
Can we do that? Include the parents?
We are, we are the, we are the school committee. There are nomination papers are open until Tuesday. So that's how, unfortunately, that's how it works, but we are engaging with the parents. We're engaging with the parents this evening. We engage with the parents December, when we, when you came in to visit us a meeting or so ago. And this is a response to those engagements. So it's and I don't think, I hope not, but I don't think I think we all want what's best for the students. And again, when you had mentioned what part of the, what part of the curriculum, two moms, two dads, grandparents, this and that. Like, that's the reality. Like, kids should be, understand that that's reality, what's going on. I think some of the other things, so what are concerning. So what are we looking to accomplish here? So we can, you can put a halt on these things until a subcommittee of the school committee meets up?
Matt has made a motion. No other motion can be made.
Correct.
Matt had made a motion.
So nothing else can be made?
So the motion was, use the alternative. The alternative?
Continue with that motion. I don't think I finished my motion.
Okay. Well, you did. Chuck seconded it, but, so go ahead.
No, that was.
The alternative, you want to use the alternative curriculum in place of the current curriculum?
And because that motion isn't on the floor, I'll, I'll leave that motion there.
Right, so now the superintendent gave a list of what that then excludes. I'd like to hear that list again. No?
You're going to make me recite? Well, it's, it's everything except what the alternative activities are. So it's everything around family dynamics, gender identity, sexual orientation. It's all, it's good touch, bad touch, it's everything that's included, if I'm understanding that correctly.
That's all right.
This is my motion.
So he's got a motion on the table. Can we motion? Can I add to your motion?
We'll discuss it. So tell us what you're thinking.
On Matt's motion, what if we, what if we motioned to move forward to the alternative right now while we look into what was put in place a little bit more in depth, I guess I want to say.
But the alternative is just, like, alternative, it's not even what the previous health and wellness curriculum, it's just completely.
So it's getting rid of everything, yes.
So I feel like we, if we were, we accepted it as a whole. Now Matt wants to reject it as a whole. But we're still not finding that common ground because there are lessons within these frameworks that I think we all agree should, should and could be taught.
Correct. I mean, this is the opportunity. Where we get that, that parent and school, you know, member committee together, that where we can look at this from a, you know.
I know personally, I'm not comfortable rejecting the entire thing. But I would prefer to table that until we can look through it more piece by piece. But I can't motion that because there's already a motion.
And then start over again. And Chuck would throw a second.
Does that make sense what I'm saying on that?
It does, to table it.
And then, like?
We're table, does, do we move forward with the existing curriculum until we find an alternative? So that's, that's where my concern lies, is that we, you know, because the opt-in, opt-out is still there. And I, can I just, I just want to, you did address me on that in what we did speak about and I just want to back you up on, it was the teachers that the policy is, is an opt-out. It's not an all opt-in. And just to give the teachers the credit where credit's due is, they implemented the permission slip, which in effect gives it, gives you an opt-in. So I will give credit where credit's due and, and, you know, it was the teachers that did that, so. Do I want the, do I, do I want a different, less politically motivated, but, you know, someone we can find in the middle? Yes. I don't have a different motion to put it.
Mr. Superintendent, second, eighth, ninth, and 10th grade, has this already been complete, correct?
Yes, grades two, eight.
What was approved already has been complete? That health curriculum is done?
Those in the fifth grade, we're just getting the permissions. Because remember, that's where we push the, that grade span, those standards up to grade five.
Fifth?
What's left? Mary, fives? Five, six, and seven?
Five, six is a, for the sixes, we have a, the new health curriculum, there's most.
But I think, I don't think it's mostly fifth grade that you're, you're wanting to look at and they have, they're not starting until March.
So right now, this current curriculum.
These are already pretty much, they're halfway done.
Nine to 10, because they go by semester, they are finished with this semester, like this time, but they'll go, yeah, they'll go again.
Want to talk about the opt-in, opt-out numbers?
Is that a bump?
The opt-in is going to be high because they're not reviewing all the curriculum. So it's a false number.
Seventy-two, yeah, grade two, seventy-two, yes, twenty-eight, no. Grade six, fifty-three, yes, ten, no. Grade eight, thirty-two, yes, five, no. Nine and 10, thirty-eight, yes, four, no. So.
Not the whole student body. It did not get their permission slips.
So, all right, so here we are, we have so the next, it doesn't kick off until March. The fifth grade, yeah. And so we, are there any classes between now and March, like? And the other grades, like second grade is halfway done?
Second grade is halfway through.
Eighth, ninth, and 10th are done?
They're pretty.
Oh, you just explained that.
Yeah, they're pretty. But this semester. Remember, because it's only a couple of lessons, so it's not, it's not like, it's only a couple of, like, grade two only has like four or five. Yeah, if there's one, four or five, so.
How long are the classes?
Ten and ten fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, with the long, so it's twenty minutes split and split.
You got a motion in the second on the floor. Would you like to amend that motion to?
I wouldn't amend it to.
What's that?
I don't know what to amend it to. To be very completely honest, I
Well, we like, we just have the kids do their phys ed classes like they would without the sex education stuff. Let them do it for now so we can just straighten out, get our act together, right? Let's just, at this moment.
The phys ed standard's always been four or eight. In with a health and wellness standard. It's the same frameworks.
So would we move into our previous curriculum? Is going back to the old curriculum at this time?
Until we can merge a new?
You're saying, he's saying the alternative, but you're saying go back to our previous?
Right. Their original health lessons in the meantime with that? Be a balance?
Not knowing, not having those materials in front of me is, yeah, it's a little difficult to to know.
Can the school determine what's neutral at this point and teach the kid, let them continue while we straighten it out?
But I think what, I think what you're asking, Chuck, what I'm hearing Tara saying is table the new standards for now. Have some type of a working group and bring them back to the committee to review and discuss. Is that what? Is that what?
I will rescind my motion.
Yep. Chuck, you're going to rescind your second.
I rescind.
And Matt, did you...
Thank you, Chris. That's what I've been trying...
Now, did you just make a motion to table the existing health curriculum until we have a subgroup re-presented to the committee?
Is that what you're asking?
Is that what Matt's motion was?
Not existing yet, right? So...
So, said he...
Not like the full existence, the new pieces.
The new pieces. Yeah, just the new standards is what...
They asked to table a new standards for the time being until they can be looked into with a committee of parents and educators and committee. Okay, there's a motion. Do we get a second?
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do we need another motion after this to decide what the current... What to teach in the meantime?
No, we're not... No, we just eliminated... We have... Yes.
It's all set. I don't need a motion. It'll just...
Not eliminating tables.
With that motion, look into the... Because I know comments were made tonight, that we don't have to follow DESI frameworks. Can we also be looking into that as well?
Alternative, not this. Is what you're saying?
Well, I just...
Like a ruling for the Department of Education, what happens if we just say... What do we do if we're not doing it?
Yeah, but, oh, we don't. You're dead on. Yeah, no, otherwise, we... If we were mandated to do it, we wouldn't have to vote on it. Yeah, I'm very clear about that. And they won't fine us, and they won't cut our funding because for a public school, so... But do you have to follow up with an opinion from Kelly on that? For the record...
It would be important.
Yes.
So part of further discussion on this motion, like, second grade current day is halfway through. Listen, we're going to stop. They're going to change a lessons, right?
Yeah, we... I had just said that. They can just stop.
No. That's not a...
I'm asking, well, they end up to last, and it's like, lessons are planned ahead. So...
I just had one thought to, or maybe a question. Do we know of any other districts that are looking at this as well, like any other surrounding towns? Are they just approving their teaching?
They're not approving it. They're just teaching.
And they're not even...
So all of this is because we're doing this right, just to our community who's paying attention. When there's just swag in under the road.
That's slightly misleading because you look over at Alaburu, right? Because I've actually done some research, right? So you look over at some of these other schools, did not adopt in this because they know they don't have to. So that's... You've got to tell all the truths, okay?
So it sounds like the tea was...
It's perspective. There was in forms, out forms, is there going to be a communication of how this proceeds forth?
I am just going to address that. All right. Nope, perfect. Thank you. So there's still a motion in a second on the floor. In your motion, it was administrators, school committee members, and parents. I want to make sure, be clear, that there's an opportunity for fair representation of all parents and anybody who, you know, and the parents who have different beliefs will have to work, you know, for that common ground, and I think that's what's important. I think I will give credit to the administration. I'll give credit to the parents, and I'll give credit to the school committee members because I believe it's been... The discussion of this has been very public and very transparent, and we've gotten to hear from all sides of the coin on this one. And there has been misinformation on both sides. And I looked at a post of a parents group from a few days ago who essentially blamed the superintendent and the administration for not posting the meeting properly, and this, that, and the other thing. I almost responded, and I didn't because it is the responsibility of the school committee. We are the ones elected by the people to set the curriculum. We set the agenda. I set the agenda, so there was nothing we've been... And the school committee members, and two of them are probably ready to go to a basketball game right now, it's been... You know, we don't just have school committee meetings. We have subcommittees. We have all... We're all on different committees, and many of them still have, you know, students, children in the school. So... And I do appreciate, it takes a lot of courage for all to speak up, and it's not easy. So I appreciate everybody's input, and this is how we learn, and we hopefully start to close that gap, close that divide, and start to focus on, you know, the education and fair treatment of all the students of the district. So with that being said, there's a motion in a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Thank you. Now, with that being said... Is there anything else we didn't get done? I wanted to get done... Carrie, you're leaving? Chuck, you're here for a few more?
I can list it up.
I have to leave in like 10 minutes myself. All right, so we're going to take some... So MSBA update, can we kick that off to the next meeting? All right, so we're going to put that off to the next meeting. Use of excess and deficiency fund for OPEB, it's $50,000 that we put in from E and D every year. Anybody have any question on that? I'll take a motion to approve the $50,000 from E and D to the OPEB. Did I say...
Yes.
Yep.
Second.
All right, motion made by Chuck, seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Next on the agenda is to appoint chief purchasing procurement officer, a director of finance. This is a standard appointment. Joe has received his...
MCPPO.
MCPPO, and he's waiting for our authorization to be in charge of dispersing the big bucks from the district, starting with picking a chaperone for $5,300 to go to Spain. Motion made by Carrie and seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, the ayes have it. Under the report of the superintendent, we have to vote for use of funding, February vacation, extracurricular opportunity.
Yes, we just want to run a February camp for students who are looking to do some extra academic work, but also extra sports, physical fitness, teamwork, sportsmanship, do some intramurals. We are looking for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday program with transportation, 8:30 to 11:30, at a total of $2,895. And Joe, we've already discussed funding of that, where we can find them.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Carrie, seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it.
That's great. And the next item is to approve the instructional assistant mentor position. As you know, we've been working with our Unit C staff to create a job description, so we'll have a lead mentor in each building as part of our retention strategy to keep working with our instructional assistants to keep them, grow them, and the stipend amount is $750 a year for each, would have one in each building. And it was ratified by Unit C already, so that's great news. They're very excited about the extra mentorship.
And Joe has already found this in the budget?
We found it.
Motion to approve the mentor stipend. Wishing by Carrie, seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Before we get to the business office, is I see a scout in the audience. Are you here on your... For your community service? Excuse me?
I'm here.
Come on up. Come on up.
Let's go.
You... Are you here for that, too? Come on up.
It's a great night to be here.
Introduce yourself. You're getting two badges for sitting through tonight.
Hello, I'm Kevin Burgess, my brother Benjamin Burgess. We're both with Troopland Blackstone. I'm instructor, he's a den chief. We're here tonight for our communication merit badges. We're here to take seven key points or more, write them down, and then after, we're going to take them to either our assistant scoutmaster and scoutmaster, or him, to then get our communication merit badge. That badge is one of our Eagle Required Merit badges. It's kind of in its name, it specializes in communications and giving speeches. About a month and a half ago, we went up in Rhode Island College. I then got the... Me and Bed, we got the opportunity to do the badge, and we then presented multiple speeches and business ideas as real-life scenarios. I'm currently a Star Scout. I think coming here is benefiting me. In about two months, I can earn Life Scout, which then I can start working on my Eagle project. I've been starting to begin the planning steps for my Eagle project. Right now, I've been talking to Mrs. Remka, Mr. Catalano, and some other leaders from the troops to get different ideas, where right now, my main idea is to do it with a school, the Frederick Hartnett School.
Very good. In bed or in front of you guys?
The communication merit badge, I need to list seven key points.
Are you reading on this paper?
So you let your brother do all the talking?
Sure, for about one year, when I'm coming up on my third year.
Follow your brother's lead, right? Well, I didn't think... I bet you didn't think you were going to get called up. Well, you did a heck of a job. Those communication skills are sharp as a tack. Nice job, boy. All right, business office. Joe, let's go right to the action required stuff, which is the budget journal entries.
These are just the same budget journal entries I've made. You can see there's only a couple here that are affecting function code, and I put in the description what they're for. That's...
Motion to approve the budget grant likely of all town. Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, it's unanimous.
The next action item is the Wi-Fi access point purchase. I'll do this real quick. As you know, the district's been working to update their network, wireless network infrastructure. Part of that is replacing these Wi-Fi access points. Fortunately, this is on the state contracts. We're able to do this through combis, which we can do a bidding process right through combis. That bid should close on the 20th, so we'll be able to get good pricing, whatever the best pricing we can find from that bid. We'll obviously select the vendor that's the best for the district, not necessarily the cheapest, but the one that provides the best service. It's about $144,000. Looking to fund this through the miscellaneous revolving fund balance that's remaining and a small portion out of the rental of classroom funds, so there's no impact to our general fund for this purchase. So I'm looking for approval just to do that, to fund it in that manner.
Motion by Tara, seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. Innovation Pathways Planning Grant?
Yes, as Mrs. Flowers is about to sneak out the back. Do you want to do a quick two-second? This is actually really good, very good news. We're very excited about being at this stage.
Hi, everyone. I know, there is no side door over there. Next time, I'll sit better. We have received a $15,000 planning grant. We are... And they gave us money before they gave us a designation. Don't ask me why, but they did. So we've officially put in the designation for environmental and life sciences pathway. Once we get that, then this May, we'll be able to apply for up to like $75,000 if the money is great. And we're really looking forward to revamping that and having opportunities with that and connections with internships. We're meeting with the zoo in a... Yeah, later this week, we're meeting with the zoo, and we met with QCC on Monday, so we've got some really great...
If you had helped in the Chamber of Commerce, yeah.
That's...
Right.
Yep, Friday, too. So we've got a lot going on, so once they say yes, then get ready.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
So you got a motion to accept the Innovation Pathways Planning Grant for $15,000? Made by... Motion made by Matt, seconded by Tara L. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, it's unanimous. The personnel report gets filed, the expenditure report, we've already proved the... You good, Joe? Are you good?
Yeah, good. The only other question I request I have is the use of facilities request. There's one for March second, and it's pretty standard. The other one can wait if it needs to, to the next school committee, because that's not until June.
And so we... What about the charging station and the lights? We can give an update?
Yeah, if you want. It's just ongoing. It's basically both of them. They're in the process of putting proposals together for each of them.
We should talk about the... I know that controversial issue tonight on the charging station.
Our back to gas. Our back to gas. Oh, no. Public comment is done. No. I don't... I don't even want to talk.
Long Dan, come on.
Let's go.
Can I motion to approve both facility requests? As long... Yeah, they're both.
Oh, Joe is going to handle that. Scott, you can go home. We're done. I'm going. So a motion to approve, a motion to approve facilities requests as presented by Carrie, seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. We're going to... We've just got the facilities update, right? That's it. Everything else you can... It's in your packet. Anything major that does?
Certainly, Paul, for the physical, cycle one failed, so I got industrial burner coming in.
You just bring industrial...
Assistant Office.
Have you ever had a facility that does not mention the word industrial burner?
In four years, we'll be able to do that, I hope.
Fingers crossed.
For the next agenda, we will put on the MSBA updates. That's what we skipped tonight. Joe will bring us right up to speed with the personnel report, expenditure report, and the audit, the single audit report. Other than that, does anybody have any good and well here? I thank everybody for being here tonight, rearranging the schedule. I thank the parents, the administrators, the teachers, and everyone involved in taking a deep interest in our student success. And thank for the presenters from Choices, as well as all congratulations once again to Jamie Maurice for her outstanding efforts. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Action made by Matt, seconded by Tara. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.